Yeah. Checking right now. How about anyone else that's in the other? How about Seth? Can you hear us okay?
We can, I can hear you, Mike Tudor. Mark is an echo.
I can only hear Mike. I can't hear anybody else speaking.
Okay, Mark, go ahead. Turn on your computer audio. Okay, your computer audio is on now?
Yes.
That works.
Okay. Somebody, somebody on the screen talk to us. Seth, talk to us.
I can hear you really good, Mark.
Okay.
Yep, you're clear, Mark.
All right, good. All right, thank you. All right. So we're gonna see if we can retry this. All right, good evening and welcome to Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, April 5th, 2021. We are at the Chaska Events Center. We're gonna go ahead and we're gonna call the meeting to order at 7:04. We've been having some technical difficulties, so sorry about that. So hopefully we'll get going. I do have to read our COVID statement here. So welcome, everyone. You might notice that the meeting looks a little different due to COVID-19 pandemic. We are holding our meeting at the Chaska Events Center. Because the city council has declared a local emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic, state statutes allows us to hold meetings with Zoom capabilities. If you have joined, I gotta alternate this here. If you have joined the meeting, you will notice that you have been muted via Zoom. We will have a moderator on call who will unmute those who wish to speak during the public portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, and special circumstances determined by the council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined a meeting by computer or tablet, please click on Participants on the bottom of your screen and then select the Raise Hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined a meeting by phone, press *9 to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name and number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the city council. It is meant to provide productive discourse on topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted or removed from the meeting. That's it. So, um, yes, so thank you. At this point, we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Um, with this point, Nate, will you call roll, please?
Here. Here.
Yeah. Here.
Here. Moves us to item number four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Jeff, that's what we're dealing with, so.
Yeah, and the other note I'll just have is that we did have, we was going to be next, this was the first time they had in-person training over here. Everyone came to be part of that, so we'll be here. So I'm putting this in the chat.
That we are back in-person training, so.
I'll make the motion for this.
All right. Yeah. Is there a second? And second by council member Wong is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, moves us into visitor presentation. And like some agendas might have that Chief Levy was gonna be speaking tonight, that will be at the April, I think it's the 19th meeting, so. But tonight we have a community statement against the rise in anti-Asian hate by Chaska Human Rights Commission. And that's from the Chaska Humans Right Commission, not from them. So Commissioner Seth Spreadberry is going to read a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarity especially.
As I read it, it just sounded like, it didn't sound right, so I'm hoping no one looked at it that way.
Sure. On behalf of myself, Commissioner Castillo of the Human Rights Commission and the Human Rights Commission as a whole, we'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and those watching from home, my name is Seth Spreadberry. I've lived in Chaska for the past six years and I served on the city's Human Rights Commission. As you all know, the Human Rights Commission is a group of citizens tasked with advocating for the human rights of the people of Chaska. Among those human rights is a sense of safety and belonging in one's hometown. While our community is generally a safe and inclusive place, that is not true for all people at all times. The commission is particularly concerned with the rise of anti-Asian hate in our country. On behalf of the Human Rights Commission, I would like to invite the city council and the mayor to join us in this message to our neighbors, especially our Asian-American neighbors. As city leaders, we condemn all acts of discrimination and hatred, including anti-Asian hate. And we are sorry for every time you have felt unwelcome or unsafe in this city. We will not stand for this bias in this community because that is not the Chaska way. Instead, we commit to inclusivity, representation, and the elimination of bias at every level of city government. We thank you for making Chaska your home. Thank you for your kindness and your friendship and for making our invaluable contributions to our civic life, education, culture, and business. And most of all, we thank you for being our neighbors. For the Human Rights Commission, I think it's our purpose to get the city council and the mayor to endorse this message. Join us in publicizing it via public mediums, similar to our comment on George Floyd that came out last year. We're open for any feedback that you have. I believe you received this ahead of time.
Comments from council?
Well, I feel obligated to say something here. Well, Commissioner Spreadberry and Commissioner Castillo and Carlson and the rest of the Human Rights Commission certainly thank you for.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I have to say the only person in the room whose microphone I can hear is Mayor Winchels.
It should be that microphone. Bring it closer.
This one just tied down to the table here. Can you hear me?
Try that. Just speak.
Can you hear me?
Seth, can you hear Councilmember Wong now?
No, I can still only hear you.
Well, he. Yeah, are you muted? See, before we couldn't join with audio and apparently tonight we have to.
Okay, well, I'm joining with audio here.
Got you now, Councilmember Wong.
Okay. All right. Well, so, um, I'm hearing this audio feedback.
That's, now I gotta turn that off.
All right.
I'm sorry for the complexity I brought to your meeting.
No. It's not you. It's just the technology here today. So, so thank you, Commissioner Spreadberry and Castillo, Carlson, and the rest of the Human Rights Commission. You know, the Asian community is not the first group in our country to experience racially focused hate, and sadly, it will not be the last. In most cases, these crimes are being committed against other Americans, ones who just look different through no choice of their own. You know, a number of these crimes have been committed against the elderly and even people, you know, and elderly who are defenseless. They're blindsided just walking down the street and pushed them to the ground and/or attacked like bus stops. For example, Ron Tuisan, who's a, use a, an armored, a retired Army veteran, was attacked for wearing an Army veteran hat because he proudly served our country. And for nothing other than the fact he looked Asian because he's a Filipino and Chinese and Spanish descent, he was accosted and assaulted and beaten to the ground for nothing. And no one deserves this treatment in our country. Hate or violence of any type against Asians, blacks, Latinos, Middle Eastern Muslims, LGBTQ, or any race, religion, ethnicity, or any group has, is unacceptable in our, our country or our community. I personally haven't experienced any anti-Asian sentiment here in Chaska, and I feel blessed about that because we have a really great community. My wife and I moved here to Chaska because we felt that this is a place that was safe and inclusive, and we felt that was a place that we could call home. And, you know, I appreciate that we're going, that we are making a statement and being leaders to say this is something that is unacceptable in our community. I feel that we need to make sure that everyone can say the same thing, that everyone can say they feel that this is a place they feel safe and included and welcome here. Because what makes communities like ours special is that we can look beyond the labels, we can look at those around us, and we can look at them and call them neighbors, friends. We can, you know, go to our kids' soccer games, we can, you know, have a beer together, we can help each other work on our cars or paint the deck or whatever it happens to be because we look at each other as just individuals. And that's what we as Chaskins should always be embracing. So because hate has no place in our community, because hate's unacceptable in Chaska. So thank you very much for taking the time to put together that thoughtful message. And, you know, certainly I fully support that because, you know, we cannot endorse hate of any kind in ours community. Thank you.
You know, I want to, of those words, Councilmember Wong, I would represent those. Thank you, Human Rights Commission, for putting together and making the agenda accessible to you on that. There are some new kinds of crime on the American, if I remember, went up 149% in 2020, which is an interesting number. And I think with most of our, with our, the, the, so we can say not our community, but it's hiring right there, it's like, uh, again, so we can, it's not that this is gonna happen here, but we see that they have to continue to do what they started.
I'll remember that, so I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Nate.
So I just think it's increasingly important that this not be our future where this kind of hate and violence happens. And that we just continue, and again, thank you to the Human Rights Commission for doing this, to boldly speak out against such hate and to just swiftly act if you see it happening. Stand up, especially if you are someone in the community that has privilege to jump at it and stand up against it. And again, just, it was amazing to hear your words, Councilmember Wong, to have this put together by our Human Rights Commission. And I just wanted to say, I absolutely stand with that.
Thank you.
I will unmute before I go. I hope everyone can hear me. Um, I, I would like to again echo the same thoughts as Councilmember Hatfield and also Councilmember Wong and share my appreciation for the Human Rights Commission to put together the letter, that thoughtful letter. I agree. I think what makes Chaska shine so bright isn't just our amenities, our businesses. I think really what makes Chaska shine bright is our community members and the diversity of the culture, ethnicities that reside in our community. Even looking out the window here and seeing that the people walking around on the clay hole, you can see that diversity. And I think that we as a city have put forth like strategic goals and values to kind of lean on when it comes to building a great city and providing a mission point to be the best small town. I think that in order to do that, we always need to have the lens of how do we make sure that we are having an inclusive community. And I think that as, when we as people, like Councilmember Hatfield said, really actively voice out against racism and towards inclusivity, we can recognize our community members, we can accept our community members, and we can appreciate our community members based on the diversity that make up our community. And, you know, specifically to our Asian community members that reside in Chaska and just in the area, you know, I, you know, want to share that, you know, I'm so deeply sorry for the rise of hate and that I will stand with the Human Rights Commission in stamping this out because I believe that we should have a high-quality life for everybody in Chaska, so.
I love you. Thanks, every, all council, thanks, Human Rights Commission. You know, with this on the agenda, I spent much today and over the weekend just thinking about words to say. I can't say it better than Councilmember Wong. I just really appreciate your words and wisdom to that and echo the comments of the other council members here. You know, it just, I, I, I'm glad we quickly acted. I appreciate the Human Rights Commission for drafting it, speaking in and representing it because, you know, it goes back to the fundamental values of being the best small town in Minnesota, best small town in the country, wherever you want, our world you want to do. And that includes everyone. That's diversity, inclusion includes everyone. It's not just for a certain group of people that should be the best small town, it's for everyone. And so, you know, I really just appreciate the words that were said. And for me, I, I think, again, it's that conversation about changing the narrative. You know, I, I remember growing up and hearing stories of racism and you're thinking like, okay, we, my generation can be that different, and we can do it, and here I am. And my generation is, in a lot of cases, in leadership roles, they're starting to transcend that. And in some cases, I think it's worse than it's been in years. And so, how can we do that change? And how can I use this role to be a voice for those who maybe have had no voice in government decisions or politics or city? So I continue to pledge that I will stand for what this, what this city stands for, and that's inclusivity for all Chaskins, for all Minnesotans, for all Americans, and really everyone in the world. Everyone deserves to be treated, you know, with respect, fair, and they will be, and hate does not have a place in Chaska.
I, I, I'm just gonna echo that, that all, all the words here said tonight and Seth and the Human Rights Commission for their statement is. It's just one of them that even though it says unmuted, can you hear me? Okay, my screen says unmuted, sorry. And even though this is maybe driven a little bit by the anti-Asian, how the numbers have skyrocketed, which is really sad. But I, I hope that through the statements that this is always here in Chaska, not just because of the increase in anti-Asian, but, you know, we, we've had these conversations and we've put out statements before that, that are hoping that Chaska is a welcoming community, no matter who you are, doesn't matter. And I hope that that continues and maybe this is just a good reminder for all. And I just wanna echo the same, like, thanks to Seth for even, the Human Rights Commission for putting together, so. You know, like I said, it was a great statement.
Mark, are you unmuted?
I'm not muted.
Not muted?
Oh, it says I am muted. I, I don't. So anyways, thank you for that and hopefully we can just continue that this, this statement is all the time, not just because of now that we continue it, you know, forever and a day, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council.
Is there, do we have anybody else under visitor presentation? No, okay. All right, we will move on then. So thanks again, Seth, and I see Sarah's on. I can't tell if anyone else is with us. So thanks, guys, for, for being here. Appreciate it. All right, we move on to approval of the previous meeting minutes from the November 15th meeting. If there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve the previous meeting minutes discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, moves us to item seven, consent. Again, these are items that need approval of the city, but not necessarily need a conversation, but all are welcome if anyone has a question. So at this point, is there anyone that has a question or comment on any consent item?
I have a question on Sunday. What instigated that? It's the, like clarifying the ordinance for private roads.
Yeah, so the clarification.
Oh.
There, all right. The, the clarification there is that there's always been the ability to enforce those, but it hasn't been clear in our ordinance on the private road. So this is basically just clarifying it to make it ultra-clear that, that state statute can be implemented on all roads within Chaska.
Here it is.
Yeah. It's, and this is something, and you've probably noticed over the last, well, it's been last several months, we've been bringing a lot of ordinances back for clarification. And really what we've been doing is we've been going through and finding what are the ones, what are the ordinances that we're having real difficulty upholding when we end up going into like court cases or things like that. And so it's, it's not that these, that these rules, it's not that we haven't tried to enforce these rules, it's just that the ordinance didn't always hold up when we went, when we were challenged on it. So we've been going through with those different types of ordinances sort of one by one and looking at how can we clarify the language to make it a lot more clear. You know, that if we do get challenged on these in the court process that we actually have, that's ultra-clear in our language what we mean. So you'll probably end up continuing to see more ordinances come back as we continue to go through that process.
How am I always getting muted?
I'm sure that we don't get the feedback when you're unmuted, when you're unmuted in one hour and a half.
Okay. I'm lost where I am now. Is anybody else on consent? If not, then entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve consent discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moves us on to item number eight, public hearing, adopt resolution 2021-17 and 2021-18. Modification of, am I muted?
No.
Of, uh, modification of redevelopment plan, District Number Four, established in TIFF District Number 24, adopting TIFF Plan and authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement, granting and business subsidy. That's a mouthful.
Yeah.
Who's got it, Nate or?
Uh, first of all, Mayor Councilmember, I know Nate's been on the phone with Kevin and thinks he knows what the issue with the audio is. And he suggests that we do a quick recess and that we can get it reset and it'd be easier for the rest of the meeting if you guys don't mind.
So we'd all have to leave the meeting and come back in?
We can stay on, but just mute yourself. You just have to take a motion to recess for a short, for a short break.
All right. And if you didn't hear Matt, I just want to be clear, we're having some computer audio and we got a possibility, a way to salute, solution to this, but we're gonna have to take a short recess in this meeting and there should be a few minutes. Do we need a motion in a second then?
I would, yeah.
Okay, so if someone make a motion, so I have, I have a motion by Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Gra to just take a short recess and see if we can fix this audio issue. So please, if you have, if you get kicked out or have to leave, come on back. We'll be back here shortly, so. With that, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, we're gonna go into a short recess.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do.
Just me.
You have to mute your microphone. We want everyone's microphone muted. And what happened was somebody cannot access the board. Okay, I'm gonna need to order to I ran speaker seven, talking with you. Yeah. 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 Right. Okay.
Yep, now we're back to the door. I'd say we go back to the microphone thing we had.
Kevin Ringwald, can you hear me? Okay, so Kevin hears me. I'm back on.
If this means working up here.
Matt Clark, you can hear us too?
Yes, I can hear everybody.
Okay.
Is that a good format?
Mark, Mark is direct. Everybody else is an echo. They're just picking up background.
Hold, hold on guys, they're trying to talk in the background and I can't hear anybody now. All right, whoever is speaking, try it again.
Mark, we can hear you. Everybody else is in the background as an echo.
Yeah, we're gonna have kind of people wanting to. So whoever's in here, right here, create a site for regulars. If we're on the economy. Today. Only difference is we don't, sorry, sounds a little bit. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have. Yeah.
There's gonna be some echoes. We're gonna have to deal with it.
Must they're speaking from, like a camera recording speaking. But anybody can hear. All right.
Clears the mighty. All right, so what do we gotta do? Say we're coming back from recess?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we will come back recess at seven thirty-nine. And we're gonna continue. Anybody that's joined us in Zoom or however, we're gonna ask some audio issues. Please raise your hand if you missed something and we'll have to print it out the way through this and hopefully we'll get it printed out. So. All right. So we'll go back to eight A. Get into public hearing, adopting resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen and twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. It's a modification of redevelopment plan, plan district number four, establishing district number twenty-four, adopting Tiff Plan and authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement, granting a business subsidy.
Mayor and Councilmember, this item in front of you tonight is something you've seen before. So this is with the Opitin projects of the two industrial buildings. They're up at the southwest corner of two twelve and Inglis Boulevard. And as you know, we actually established a public hearing for considering this Tiff District establishment on February twenty-second. During that time, we have to go through the process of actually notifying the school district and the county that we're doing it and allow them to provide any time for feedback on that. As far as I know, we did not receive any comments from the county or school district. So that leaves us the ability now to be able to move forward with establishing this Tiff District. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nate, who has been putting together this project and explain exactly what the subsidy would be.
Can you, can people hear me?
No, you gotta unmute.
All right. Mayor and council members, this is an item that is related to the Opitin project for the East Creek, or I'm sorry, the Chaska Creek Business Park. That you all are, I think, pretty familiar with that project to this point, received final approval from you all at your previous meeting. Most recently, well, I guess I'll back up that the council called for the public hearing to be held on tonight at its February twenty-second meeting. Most recently, as part of the Tiff process, on March tenth, the planning commission did review the plan at their meeting and determined that it does conform to the general plans for development per, per the comprehensive plan for that area specifically. So they did make that recommendation. Tonight, there are two different resolutions in front of you for the council meeting, and then there will be a resolution for the EDA meeting as well. So we'll have that following this meeting. The first resolution for the council to consider tonight is to modify the redevelopment district, establish Tiff District number twenty-four, and then adopt the tax increment finance financing plan for the district, for the district number twenty-four. The redevelopment district number four has been in existence for a long time.
Since nineteen eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Yeah.
Since nineteen eighty-five. When it was originally established, it was established to follow the city boundaries as it, as they existed at that point in time. Since then, the whole southwest Chaska area has been brought into the city. And we haven't had a project, you know, needing a Tiff within the the original district as the boundaries were set since, since that change occurred. But now that we're moving into developing industrial development over in that area of the city west of two twelve, we're going to, this is the first of what I think we could probably anticipate a number of various economic fill the Tiff districts or abatements and things like that that will be coming down the pipe. So now's the right time to change that district boundary so that it follows the city, the current city boundary, so that we've got that authority to establish Tiff District. So that's what that portion is about. Establishing Tiff District number twenty-four, this is an economic.
Yep, yeah. So how was this part of the township that it was not part of the city? I thought this was part of the city always.
It was.
Cause I, just odd to me that
Wait, I'll
little segment wasn't part of.
I'll take that back. Everything north of Inglor was, the stuff south of Inglor wasn't. That's why it's not in our electric service territory either. So, and regardless, even if it was in the city at the time, we never drew the redevelopment boundaries of this to include that. So even if it wasn't included, we'd have to expand it to be able to do that.
Okay.
All right, thanks. It just seemed odd when you looked at the map that it was just that little segment. But I know that wasn't probably the, as a whole, but it just seemed odd that that one little piece wasn't part of it. Tiff, or what do we call it, redevelopment plan district number four. So, okay, all right, thanks.
And so Tiff District number twenty-four, establishing that, I think you saw the map that's attached to this item that shows where that would go. Essentially, it's the two Opitin sites. And then if you, when you cross the road, there's a site that's owned by traditions over there. That's also guided for similar industrial style development. With this project bringing the sewer up to feed Opitin, it's gonna open up that tradition site to be ready for development as well. So we're anticipating that something will happen there sooner than later. Makes sense just to include it in the Tiff District this time. So it's ready to go when that project moves forward. So the Tiff District would be an economic development district, which is able to support developments like this, which is primarily industrial. You can have, I think, about twenty percent of the use end up being office use, but it really needs to be primarily industrial style development, which this meets that criteria. It ends up being an eight-year district that way, which is nice too, because then, you know, we're, we're just using it for that short period of time and then goes back to the, the general tax rules. This project, as we talked about when the council approved the letter of intent, is eligible under the city's economic development policy to receive two times that, that tax eligible increment that's generated, or I'm sorry, that tax, the increment eligible property taxes that are generated by the project. And so that's what this Tiff District is doing. There's objectives that are set in the plan that, that include redevelopment of underutilized properties. So right now it's farm, it's farmland. So the redevelopment is causing that industrial development to occur. Funding of eligible improvements related to the qualification of the property is an economic development district. So that, that's what I was talking about, that industrial style use as it qualifies under an economic development district per statute. And then expansion of tax base and facilitation of job growth. So that's always been the city's goals with these sorts of tax increment projects is that we're really trying to grow our tax base through industrial development and bring in those jobs that, you know, can help people who are living here or nearby access good quality head of household type jobs. So this building, or I'm sorry, the two buildings that Opitin is proposing here, we've got the hundred and thirty thousand square foot building to the north, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand square foot building to the south. And then we've got in my notes here, that two hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet, which is what's projected could, could potentially fit right on that tradition site. As we're putting the plan together, what we want to really do is talk about what's maximized out of this district. Something as we go through the planning process, you know, the building will get refined. It may not ultimately be two hundred and twenty-one square or a thousand square feet. But we want to be able to allow the district to capture that if we're able to achieve sort of that maximum building size on that site. So over the life of the district, we're estimating that just over seven point eight million dollars could be captured in increment. That's assuming that, you know, all three of these buildings are fully maximized on the site, on the site, and that they're there for the full term of the, of the district. Depending on the details, it could be more, or I'm sorry, it wouldn't be more, but it could be less. But again, we want to try and set this so that we're able to maximize that increment capture. Then we also set the estimated associated costs for this district at the same amount, seven point eight million. Again, we've got plenty of costs out there that we can attribute these dollars towards. We've got, you know, the incentive that the businesses themselves are, are eligible for per our, our policy. And then we've also got all the sewer extension, you know, stormwater, site prep, all sorts of eligible costs. It will far exceed seven point eight million dollars when we're all said and done. But we want to make sure that we can capture that increment and put it to good use. So the sorry, my screen's jumping around here. So that's, that's really the, the main highlight points of the Tiff Plan, setting the Tiff District and, and sort of redrawing the redevelopment district for the Tiff District to reside within. The second resolution is authorizing the, the execution of a redevelopment agreement and granting a business subsidy. So that's our agreement with Opitin. And in the agreement itself, you'll say, you'll see that they're listed as KTJ three seven six LLC. Often what you see in these sorts of projects is that there'll be an LLC created for the project itself. And that's just, you know, how the business is conducting their, their implementation. But really, that's, that's Opitin. That's who we've been working with. They've created the LLC for the purposes of this project. It's the, the agreement itself is really in line with the letter of intent that was approved by the Chaska EDA on February twenty-second. And then you might recall it was amended on February fifteenth. So that twenty-second letter of intent was really implementing the policy that we have in place. We amended it on March fifteenth as the, as the developer was going forward and understood the soils situation on the site. They discovered there's significant correction that needs to be occurred, needs to be addressed there. And so we added another six hundred thousand dollars to their eligibility to assist with that soils piece. You recall that was only half of the cost. Well, not only, but that was half of the cost of the soil correction, which is about one point two million dollars in total estimated. So we're seeing that Opitin would need to build the buildings as they've been approved, the planning process to be eligible for these dollars. And that would be over the course of the life of the district, they would get a pay as you go note, which means that as the increment is generated, they would get paid on an annual basis up to those total amounts that are defined by those letter of intents. So the recommendation here tonight is for council to approve the two motions. The first one is adopting the modification of the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number four, establishing tax increment financing district number twenty-four and adopting a tax increment financing plan for the district. The second motion is to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement and granting a business subsidy. That's for Of the redevelopment agreement and granting a business subsidy. That's for with oped in. Any questions about what's been presented? That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
My question was, if you didn't hear, was asking if the traditions property, which isn't, doesn't have plans at this point. Part of test, district number twenty four, and the answer was yes. And then I, cause I knew it was going to be all part of the, getting it into the redevelopment district. For our project number four, but I wasn't sure if we were making that part of the TIF. So alright, thanks. Anyone else for?
One, just quick reminder to this is a public hearing.
No, on, on the council actually requested, it's not listing any numbers, but when I read it. It was listing twenty twenty one seventeen and eighteen. So I'm not sure which one is seventeen and which one is eighteen. I don't think I know that, but I'm reading the final recommendation, but. So, but in my, in my agenda, it's talking about.
So mayor, the resolution twenty twenty one seventeen would be the resolution to adopt the modification. Yep.
Okay.
And then twenty twenty one dash eighteen would be authorizing execution of the, of the redevelopment agreement.
I just wanted to make sure I was right on that, because i- in my report, it doesn't show that. So alright. Any other discussions from council before we go and open the public hearing up? Not seeing anything. Okay, well, go ahead and open the public hearing at. Seven fifty four. Is there anyone here? Mike, is there anyone in the audience that has and wants to speak regarding? Fifth district twenty four and the redevelopment plan district number four. Nobody's in the audience.
I'll just point out that Jay Moore from oped in is here if you need to ask any questions.
Well, we don't have any questions, so I guess there's nothing to pose to him unless Jay, you got questions? I don't know.
I'm not saying you have to ask a question. You just, he's here.
I'm listening, so thank you and Mr. Mayor.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff. You know, we're just elated to have support from the city and we have a great project that we want to pursue and. We're ready to dig in. We worked with, you know, almost everyone on the screen here quite extensively and I think. Everyone has a schedule here to, to implement. One thing Nate, I don't know the numbers that you threw out. If they matter in this discussion, but the, the one building is one sixty eight and the second one is one thirty three. So I don't know if that matters on tonight's, you know, vote, but. The approved plans are one sixty eight and one thirty three. And the one sixty eight building is phase one, which we plan on working on. Towards the end of this summer, once the soils issues gets corrected. And then the plan would be for the second building to immediately commence in the spring of twenty two. And complete that in the fall of twenty two before Christmas. So. I just wanted to kind of lay that out, but I'm open for any other questions if anyone has any. But thank you for your support.
Thanks Jay, appreciate that. Does that, do the numbers matter? I didn't hear the numbers you gave. No. Cause they're already in the original.
Yeah, it essentially they need to build what was approved. So yeah, I apologize for the error on the number and thanks Jay for correcting that.
You're, you were looking at the south plan, I'm sure. So it's all good.
I think shot over the ball, but we'll just let that fly.
All in, all in good fun. Nate and I have talked a lot. It's all good.
It was, it was a complete miss, so we're.
But Nate loves when you point out mistakes he makes.
To check if it was on record, you know, we gotta have approval here tonight. So sorry.
Alright, last call. Anyone want to speak on? Tiff district twenty four or redevelopment project number four. Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven fifty seven. And at this point then, I would be looking for a motion to approve resolution adopting a modification. To the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number four establishing tax increment financing. Economic Development District number twenty four, therein and adopting tax increment financing plan therefore. Thank you. So I have a motion, motion by council member along. Second by council member. Hubbard. I wanted to say Hatfield again. I can find the other way, but I struggle when I can't see it. So any further discussion? Hearing none, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries and now we will do twenty twenty one dash eighteen, which is a motion to approve resolution. Authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement and granting a business subsidy. Again, discussion? Hearing none. Is there someone that'd be interested in making a motion on?
The council member Graff.
Twenty twenty one dash eighteen. We have a motion by council member Graff.
Second.
Second by council member Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Alright.
Mayor and councilor, I'll just remind you, after this meeting, the EDA also has to approve this too. But it's basically the same action.
Right. Okay, thank you. I'll just keep playing. I know, but I gotta talk. Alright, who's this to item HB, which is adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash nineteen. Except twenty twenty one downtown reconstruction project feasibility study.
Mayor and councilor, it is that time of year again, that we have to identify which projects we're moving forward with. Or proposing to move forward with, with our twenty twenty one street reconstruction pro- project. I'm getting sort of excited because we're like almost done with downtown reconstruction. Which is pretty neat, because I remember when we started a decade ago, getting this going and. You know, by the end of this, we're going to have all new infrastructure in downtown, which is a huge improvement for, for the downtown area. There's pretty strategic reasons that actually we've talked about before, why, why we're choosing. The roads that we are this year for the street reconstruction and primarily it's to get ready for the highway forty one and highway sixty one. Projects that will be happening over the next two summers after this. Matt's here to go over the. Go over the project feasibility study and then answer any questions he has. So I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Before I start, I just, I know we're having some issues with. Hearing people and things like that. Can everybody see my screen? Just a thumbs up. Big wave, right? Mayor and city council, tonight's feasibility study that we're talking about. Again, carries the same continuation of the streets in downtown. Pretty familiar map that most have seen. The streets that are in gray are the streets that have been completed like Matt had mentioned. In downtown, we've been at the downtown street reconstruction program for a little over ten years. I too am getting pretty excited about finishing up. We both have been here since fruition of when we started this thing, but essentially you can see we still have. Blocks that are in the northwest corner, specifically Sixth Maple Beach, Fifth Street area. Those streets are streets that we were intentionally or we were originally considering for this year, but as Matt mentioned. You know, we've, we've essentially had to reroute and reshift things. And we'll get into some of the project details with the forty one and sixty one project. But this year's streets again, everybody's seen the map in the past. Two blocks or the blocks that are shown in red are those that are programmed for this year. We have the two blocks of Walnut Street. That are between Fourth Street and Chaska Boulevard, Counter Road sixty one. And then the block of Fifth Street. Between forty one and Walnut. You know, again, one of the drivers, as Matt mentioned, is, you know, the timing of forty one and Counter Road sixty one. Right now, the way that the project schedules have laid out is that sixty one would be. Started for construction in the summer of two thousand and twenty two, so next summer. And with forty one following, you know, in the next summer and in two thousand and twenty three. Again, there's going to be lots of project overlap, trying to maximize construction period of time. But that really, you know, those two projects in and of itself really drove. Staff to make the recommendation behind why it is that we would select this year's projects. Supplemental to that, city was successful through state legislature with the recent bonding year that. We do have a bridge replacement that was eligible and has been received funding. On the map, you can see we have the existing old concrete slab bridge over off of Sixth Street. That did get state funding awarded for that replacement of that bridge this year. I'm going to walk through just the exhibits and I think, you know, by all means, if you have questions. You know, Matt, scream and yell and tell me to stop. I, I know we've got. Sound issues and things, but. This project is, you know, again, size and scale really was intended to gear up for some of the things that are happening. The exhibit that's shown on your screen, again, this is the, the standard utility exhibit that. The city shares for each of the individual projects shows the sanitary sewer upgrades in green. All new sanitary sewer that would be installed along Walnut Street, as well as all new sanitary sewer along Fifth Street. Same similar as with the water main that's proposed. Again, the utilities have been a part of the city's overall plan for. You know, the downtown grid system and upgrading those utilities in downtown. One of the key components and as we, you know, as we talk about the next couple of years. Highway forty one in plans to incorporate a new pedestrian tunnel. The new pedestrian tunnel in and of itself. Requires a relocation of our city utilities. More specifically sanitary sewer and some of the water main that currently exists out in sixty or out in forty one. On the top of your map, which is very difficult to see is that there is a sewer line. That where, that is proposed to be severed by the new concrete box culvert. Part of the forty one project as well as this year's project intends to re. Reroute and to deal with the, the sanitary sewer services and how each of those individual commercial properties. That have joined that sewer are being dealt with. This year's project more specifically addresses the Dolce Vita. With the gravity sanitary sewer line that's being installed this year, it does allow us. With this year's project to reroute their sewer service so that again, their property and. Looking forward to other properties that there, this one would not be disrupted and would be dealt with and repurposed in advance of the highway. Forty one project. So that is one of the key elements when we looked at this year's project. Again, talking through things that are included in the feasibility study. No different than years past, the city does have a process that we've been using in downtown to upgrade. All of the new sewer and water as well as utility or sewer and water services. Those costs are also included in the report. Because we are back down in the core commercial area. One of the things that we will be doing is upgrading like we have in the past in the core commercial area. Water services. So when I say upgrading water services is essentially. Not all of the properties in downtown are sprinkled. By us or by the city choosing to rebuild these streets and by installing new water main. We are able to increase the line or the service size that leads up to the building. So that in the future, as the city, as if, as if any of the buildings repurpose or if there's a change in use. That the ability to sprinkle those buildings and not having to go out in the street becomes available for those properties. So pretty standard for us, but again, it's one of those important things as we, we look at utilities and upgrading utilities. For the streets for this year. Just gonna talk through. Streets, the street layouts again. Everybody hopefully can see on the exhibit and I'm happy to zoom in on any of the individual streets. But on this exhibit describes or intends to show. How it is that street layouts are being proposed for this year. We'll go through just each one individually. Fifth Street. Was identified in the downtown master plan as one of the core commercial streets. That would receive streetscape upgrades as well as a very specific street layout or how it is that. Things will be reconstructed. What you see between, on Fifth Street between highway forty one. And Walnut Street is really a mirror image of what was previously reconstructed. Between Pine Street and forty one on the, on the west side of Fifth Street. What's proposed here again is two twelve foot drivelanes. With diagonal parking becoming or being created on both sides of the street. There's also a pedestrian plaza area that's being created mid-block with the bump out nodes. To incorporate some of the streetscape elements that we'll talk about just here in a short little bit. Again, all new upgrades with, from essentially the building face to building face. The sidewalks that are proposed again would also be upgraded. Again, all new concrete sidewalks. Sidewalks that exist today are in that seven to eight foot range. And again, this year's project plans to put back those. Eight foot concrete sidewalk along this block. Talking through just individually, we have the block of Walnut Street between Fourth Street and Fifth Street. This year's project, again, the drivelanes, the two twelve foot individual drivelanes. Talking specifically about parking currently and what is proposed is to re. Replace the parallel parking that exists along the east side of. Fourth Street or excuse me Walnut Street. As well as maintaining the parallel parking in front of the residential properties along. Four fifteen and four twenty three. Walnut Street as well. The change to the layout that you see is creating additional parking. Mid-block between. Or next to the Moravian Church parking lot or parking Moravian Church building. Again, the reasoning for increasing the parking was to really maximize parking in the overall area. As well as to give some foresight for future streets. As we make some considerations along Fourth Street for how it is that we treat parking in the future for that. As well as Walnut Street. Finishing up the block of Walnut between fourth and, fourth and third, excuse me. The project again continues to carry the same theme as far as concrete sidewalk or concrete crosswalks that would go in. At the intersection of Fifth and Walnut, again, creating those pedestrian treatment areas at. All four corners of the, of the block. Moving to the north, just talking through the, before we talk through parking is that, you know, the. Street replacement again would continuation of the, the same twelve foot drivelanes. Part of the, part of the County Road sixty one project plans to implement a new signal. at sixty-one and Walnut Street. Uh this year's project really set helps set the stage for making some of those signal improvements and you know, having the intersections, both intersection, both projects being designed at the same time. The the intersection in and of itself, which is which is proposed is essentially to be built south of sixty-one. There would be a through lane uh which exists today with a center-left uh as well as a through-right that's being proposed as a part of uh the overall intersection design. And again, it mimics ultimately what is being proposed to be built out on high out on County Road sixty-one as well. So talking through just parking, I'll start on the north side or on the west side uh next to the Meadow Spring Church. Uh currently, there is diagonal parking that exists along that uh west edge of the block of the street. Uh that is again being proposed to remain or stay intact. Uh the change that you do see uh is repurposing of the uh Auburn Manor entrance. Uh part of the discussion that staff has been having uh over the last couple of months uh with Auburn Manor is hearing their feedback is parking is is really a high priority and a high value, uh especially in the area, not only for them, but ultimately uh during, you know, business hours as well as adjoining uses. In working with uh Auburn Manor is the the design was or the the layout ultimately reflects, you know, repurposing, uh taking out the turning movements which occur kind of in block where you have the the entrances, which is uh a two-way entrance coming in and coming out. Uh it ultimately organizes their entrances and creates the circulation to to occur within their property. Uh so building almost what you would see is uh an access frontage road that would connect between uh the intersection at Fourth excuse me, Fifth, and I call it the park and ride uh or the uh the parking lot that's just to the north, uh which is used both by city, you know, by it's multi-use but heavily used by Auburn Manor facility staff as well. Again, all-new replacements of concrete sidewalks. Uh both of these streets uh or Walnut Street in particular was identified as one of the commercial edge streets uh in the downtown street streetscape plan. Uh by that being, uh the intent was is to create more of that uh heavier movement, broader sidewalk movement along the commercial edge. What you see along the west uh edge of Walnut is, uh again, it's a an eight-foot concrete sidewalk uh between County Road sixty-one uh leading itself all the way up to uh what would ultimately connect you to City Square Park. Flip side to that is that uh on the commercial edge streets, there's a residential component. Uh and so what you do see is moving back on the east side uh next to the residential properties is maintaining that five-foot concrete standard residential sidewalk. Uh we do, the the feasibility study does propose uh kind of a multi-use uh sidewalk portion that would serve between the Auburn Manor entrances um and to create more of that uh, you know, broader sidewalk that would just assist with moving people through their site as well as uh north-south to the residential properties. I, before I talk streetscapes or we we delve into kind of some of the components, is there any questions related to the layout?
I'm gonna have the feedback, but sorry. Okay. No, I think I'm okay. All right. Just a quick question. So from my understanding. Okay. From my understanding, is the parking, available amount of parking, is it increasing? Is that my understanding with the uh the added diagonal lots over by the Moravian Church property?
Yes.
Or?
Yes, parking would be increasing from what exists today.
Yeah, I think, one thing I'll jump in on that one, i- it's definitely increasing on the road itself, but the other thing to keep in mind is we're actually in the process of working now on uh with the Highway forty-one project of actually uh creating off-street parking lots. Uh we're actually in the process now of working with the Moravian Church uh to uh potentially acquire property that they have behind their church. So there's gonna be an additional parking lot there. And then also down working on the block south of uh, you know, basically down by like Von Hansen's uh meets there too. So there's no question that there's quite a bit more parking uh that's gonna exist here. I think one thing to point out that that like Matt was sort of alluding to is one of the reasons we're really focusing on trying to get more parking here is that improvements that we're almost certain are gonna have to be made with turn lanes to Fourth Street is gonna affect the parking on Fourth Street. So right now, there's uh angled diagonal parking. And so we're trying to make sure that we don't have a net loss of of parking when we have to go and reconstruct that road.
I I have one more additional question. I don't know if it's pertinent to this particular thing, but you had mentioned about upgrading water services and you mentioned sprinkling um buildings. Do we require, if a change of use is in a commercial building, that they upgrade to be sprinkled?
Uh we don't, but what we've done is we've created a uh basically an incentive program where on commercial buildings that uh already exist, we'll actually pay for the upfront cost of actually sprinkling that. That includes uh they have to go from a regular water service to a four-inch water service coming into the building. So we'll pay for the service and the stuff in the building and then assess it back to them. And basically what we found is that these buildings, a lot of times their decrease in insurance costs a lot of times covers the cost of the assessment. So w- we haven't forced it, but we've incented it and it's, that's actually worked really well.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Cool. Usually over eight thousand square foot, um but it's the, our program is specifically geared towards those buildings that exist and they're not being torn down, but instead being change of use or redeveloped or things or re- remodeled, I should say.
Great. I'm gonna jump through a couple of things uh just quickly here regarding streetscapes. Again, uh wanted to point out just more specifically the block of Fifth Street. Um what you will, what's been included in as far as in the report and the costs in the report uh again, would be the, some of the incorporating the same streetscape elements as you saw again, north of si- north of City Hall, uh primary gateways, secondary gateways that would be located at the Highway forty-one and Walnut Street intersection. When I say primary gateways, it really is the the brick columns, the railings, the planting beds uh that would happen to kind of showcase the entrance coming into the commercial street. Uh mid-block, what you see again is that pedestrian plaza area uh incorporating some of the bench trash receptacles, uh heritage columns, seat walls, planters. Uh you know, again, same treatments as what was put in place. Just repurposing how it is that they would actually uh be kind of situated within the block uh trying to address pedestrian movements and, you know, having the the entrances, call it a entrance to a parking lot uh and how it is that we negotiate keeping cars and people somewhat separated. Um what's not shown on here is is some of the bollards uh and some of the other treatments that we would use uh to try and create create some of those things. Uh I do see, they've got a couple of them on here, but again, uh what this project does is uh what Matt had kind of alluded to earlier is we are actively designing uh the Paseo uh network that would be a part of or incorporated as a part of the parking lot design. Uh that's being proposed as a part of the Highway forty-one project. Uh again, that parking lot would be located south. Uh but again, emulates and 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 utilizes part of the Paseo network is implementing uh the plaza areas and how it is that we negotiate and navigate people uh and cars through the plaza area as well as the the new parking lot. Um this year's project really kind of just addresses what's happening out in the street. Uh what council will see is, you know, when staff will be coming back is is most likely a part of a separate work session is is going through more of those treatment areas and talking through parking uh Paseos forty-one. Um so this year's project again kind of sets the stage. It's soon to be followed here in the next month with a lot more exhibits and a lot more uh information for council to consider as we go forward with that project, forty-one project. Um again, we talked about sanitary sewer. Uh one of the elements, you know, again, what's shown on your map is a storm sewer map. With implementing the Highway forty-one pedestrian tunnel, uh again, not only sanitary sewer is planned to be impacted, but also how drainage is being treated on Highway forty-one uh is also being impacted. Uh this year's project starts to combine and, you know, capture some of the the treatment area or capture some of the storm water that, again, will not be allowed to, you know, pipe through a new pedestrian tunnel uh and reroutes some of the runoff that is being uh being channelized along forty-one, carrying it through to the regional system that, you know, will ultimately travel through our project, but then also out onto County Road sixty-one. Uh which is ultimately the offloading zone for, you know, how storm sewer uh is kind of bifurcated with both the county highway as well as the state highway. Uh so sanitary sewer, storm sewer are are both kind of critical elements as we look towards uh, you know, future year's street projects. This year, again, the design will incorporate the necessary improvements or the necessary upgrades, pipe sizing increases and things that would uh need to accommodate future stormwater needs along Highway forty-one as well. I mentioned previously uh that the city was able to receive state bridge funding. So off to the side of this project on the big map, uh one of the things that's been incorporated in the feasibility study is the replacement of the Sixth Street Bridge. Um the map, what you can see is the the pink area that my cursor is kind of showing is uh that's the old footprint of the the concrete slab bridge that exists today along Sixth Street. Uh the concrete slab bridge is again being replaced with a new concrete box culvert. Uh again, when you trying to uh create more of a picture, uh the s- the the concrete, so very similar structure was just put in at Stoughton and Beach Street. Uh as council member, I think with last year's project, we, you know, we've essentially created the same thing. The change that that will be occurring in with this year's project again is really with the concrete box culvert, uh setting the stage as far as uh street improvements and street layout options uh as we consider uh Sixth Street for reconstruction. Uh again, this, the the concrete folks who drive it today, uh obviously, it's it's a very narrow bridge. Um, you know, and ultimately, the bridge, the the new structure would provide for on-street parking to drivelanes, on-street parking as well as sidewalks on both sides, which is part of kind of that connectivity piece that we've identified as uh in in this, in in all of the streets in downtown. So uh the the box culvert is sized to to meet those conditions as we look forward. You can almost see generally where some of the, you know, how some of the the new curb would be aligned within the exhibit uh as well as future sidewalks. Uh but again, the project in and of itself is essentially removing the old bridge and essentially installing uh the necessary underground utilities to set the future, set the stage for future utility extensions that would occur uh as early as a project could be considered for next year. Repurposing the street uh just simply so that we can plow and maintain it over the winter months and and continue for for next year. Uh we'll talk about project costs. Uh again, just breaking down uh the fifth and Walnut Street blocks, you can see street improvement costs are are shown, two-point-two-seven million, uh storm sewer, again, three-hundred-and-thirteen. Water main improvements, two-hundred-and-three-thousand. Water services, hundred-and-seven. Sanitary sewer, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, and sewer services, eighty-one-thousand. Total project costs are considering just the street uh, the street portions, three-point-two, over three-point-two million. Uh breaking down just the bridge replacement costs, again, uh the bridge in and of itself has been funded for three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars. Uh the street improvements are listed for two-hundred-and-fifty-five. There is a water main component and a sewer component for future utility extensions, six-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand. Uh total estimated feasibility report costs, a little over three-point-eight million uh is what is proposed for a project for this year. Just walking through the schedule, again, this is something uh we go through with council every year is tonight, we're at the April fifth meeting uh where council would accept the feasibility study. I have to show it if we select to continue with project and ordering a public improvement hearing. Public improvement hearing is set for May third, uh tentatively. Again, that's where staff would be bringing back a much less presentation, uh but then also having the improvement hearings so that if there were any questions uh from the public going through that process. Uh setting the assessment hearing, uh again, no, no different than any of the other projects. City wa- is proposing to assess uh those properties that benefit from the improvements. Uh the assessment hearing is tentatively set for May seventeenth uh with a project date that again, uh that we would potentially start construction after the Fourth of July uh holiday and in that midsummer time zone. Uh so completing all of the projects yet still for the remainder of this year. Uh that would include all of the work that we just went through as far as the street improvement as well as the box. Any questions?
Matt, um I might have to turn this down. Isn't this construction schedule late? I mean, not awarding bids till July sixth, isn't that gonna be challenging to get contractors?
You know, we've, we've heard, actually, I've heard really good things, um hearing from folks that, you know, that they do have a nice summer workload uh or that they would have a summer workload available. What this really does is it sets it up to say, you know, it would be a smaller project that somebody would essentially come through and complete by this. So is this later than what we have ever done in the past? The answer is no. But again, I I think one of the things we'd have to consider is whether or not we did get competitive bids when we do get to that point.
And if they're not competitive bids, then what do we do?
We will have a decision to make uh as to whether or not we move forward with the project, uh we rebid it. Uh whether or not we phase the project a little differently, do portions, we'd have to, we'd have to, staff would have to come back and look at making some recommendations at that point.
One thing I will point out with this. You wanna mute that? Uh one thing I will point out with this is that the we're in communication with contractors and they know what the schedule is, and so we may not, you know, actually uh receive the the bids and accept them until June uh twenty-first meeting, but this is an unknown. but this is an unknown project that's coming forward to contractors. And so they sort of look at what projects are coming up in the future. So, you know, we're going to get a lot of the same contractors that we get most every year bidding on this type of project.
Okay, I just, I, I never like looking at construction completion November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. That just seems late because they're always later and now we're talking December. I mean, we got away with it this year, but we're not going to get away with it every year. So that, that just scares me with that late of a bid letting and construction not starting till July sixth. But if we've done it before, we've done it before and it is kind of a light load, three blocks. Kind of, kind of getting down a little bit with three blocks. Normally we're six or eight. Clark says nothing.
It's, it is significantly less of a project than what we typically would do.
Is it plausible that the box culvert industry is going to be done by different contractors?
It's always possible, but I think we, well, no, it's going to be bid as a package. And so, no, it'd be the same contractor.
Yeah, they could sub that bridge out.
They could sub the bridge out, but it'd be the same general.
It'd be the same general. And then, and then my other question, matter probably more like Matt Poteraski is from the, from the mid-block Paseo, there's probably no way with that parking lot of the church there that there's any kind of a walkway that leads you to that future undercrossing of forty-one, right? I mean, that'd be right smack in the middle of that parking lot.
Yeah.
Right over to the new, connect with the new trail.
Yeah, part of it is going to be, part of the issue, Mr. Mayor, is, is most, the issue is grade. The grade separation will be likely over a good portion of the existing parking lot. So if you consider the pedestrian tunnel that's going to go in would be much lower than the highway. Bringing that grade up and transitioning back, there's really, there's, there's really no way to connect those without having some sort of a elevator or, you know, a way to bring that down. The corridor just simply wouldn't, doesn't provide for it.
I think the best way to describe it is that the, anybody using that tunnel who is coming up the Paseo is going to go over to Walnut. And they're gonna, they're gonna get into the tunnel and the trail there because that exit coming out of the trail is going to be not that far from Walnut Street.
Okay, and I didn't, I didn't know where the grade change was with that. If that's way back there, yeah, then it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, I just know that the mid-blocks were kind of, were hopeful, hopefully to evolve that that's more of the pedestrian walkways and stuff like that and I just thought it made sense, but.
I think as we get up to this section too, you know, it's, it's really gonna, you know, be able, I mean, people are going to have a couple of different options when they come here because they're going to be able to either go over to forty-one or over to Walnut. And if they want to cross without doing the light, then going over to Walnut, they can just go under that trail.
Right. Yeah, I just, I didn't, I didn't, I guess that was part of the question, but I, but as I look at it now, I see what the road is, yeah, that, that to make grade would probably come back almost all the way to Walnut.
Yeah, I think we almost likely, I think we almost likely see is the railing, you know, a decorative railing would be put in along the top there next to the parking lot.
Right. All right, any other questions for staff? Hearing none. So basically all we have to do right now is accept this report, correct? And we have to add in the date of the.
You'd also be ordering the public improvement hearing, which would be for the May third date. So there's, there's again, two things that we have to go through. You know, first of all, we do the neighborhood meeting, the neighborhood meeting where we sort of go over the project and talk about concerns people might have, things like that. That's actually tomorrow. And a lot of these questions we get answered for residents before it even gets to that public improvement hearing. But we'll have the public improvement hearing that first meeting in May. And then the next step then is to have that assessment hearing. Now, the assessment hearing can happen at any time, but we like to do it before the project to see if there's going to be any contesting so that we know that before we go into the project.
So again, any other questions? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, accepting feasibility study of the twenty twenty-one downtown street and utility reconstruction project and ordering the public improvement hearing for May third, twenty twenty-one. Seven o'clock at a council meeting, right? All right, so if there's not question. All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wong, to approve twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Discussion.
I was just going to thank Matt, you know, you every year do a great job kind of running through the process and kind of outlining all the key features and, you know, I've, I'm newer to this process in general. So it's good to see all those gray streets on that map versus yellow and red. So just, just a commentary of thanks for walking us through the process again.
You know, and the one thing I really want to give kudos to Matt on is, and, and the mayor in particular knows this because he's been here the entire ten years, is it's pretty unusual for us to have people coming and pushing on the assessment amount. Because there's been such a consistent process that we've used through this that, I mean, we saw it last year. There's some people who are angry when we're not doing their street. And so I, I, I mean, I think that shows that people really want to see this happen. They recognize the, the value of the improvements that are being made. But there's a lot of behind the scenes conversations that Matt has from now until the assessment hearing, but then throughout the project, we also have, you know, very individual contact with our project manager. You know, going and working with residents that, you know, because inevitably this is, this is an old town and there's lots of quirky things and, and those quirky things always pop up during construction projects. And so to have somebody that's on top of that really makes a big difference.
Oh, okay.
For example, like, how many years do you think are left? It doesn't look like there's very much left, I mean.
Yeah, so I think what you'd see as far as schedule is you'd see Third, Fourth and Pine Street around City Square West done at the same time as that project. We've purposely left that for that reason. You'd see probably all of the stuff up in the northeast side of downtown done in one year. In fact, if I had to guess, that's probably next summer. And then there's just a couple of other streets. I would say, I would say, you know, you might actually see us do like City Square West streets and and another project in the same year because we sort of build in the street costs into the project for City Square West. So you could see a couple of things going on in the summer. So I'd say two to three years. City Square area is different. We're still working through a lot of issues on that one, primarily because of archaeological issues around the park. And we're still looking at what we're actually going to be allowed to do around there. So that's very much up in the air. That's why I, I wouldn't even want to venture a guess now because we're in the process of sort of figuring out what we can do. And it might be different than what we've been able to do on other streets. So I'm pretty confident on everything else except for that, that, that one, we still need to gather more information.
So the streets of the west side, that would probably, you know, those would be the leftovers we done at the same time as City Square West, maybe.
That would be my guess because there's just so few streets over there to do.
There's just two little blocks, like Elm and.
Yeah, we really, we really held off on doing Elm Street just because of the bridge.
I just had a quick question in regards to assessment piece of it. Because last year was my first year kind of encountering this. And last year we were doing residential except for the, over by the government building. So how does it go when you have commercial property in residential property assessment wise? Because you guys are pretty even Stephens with the residential piece of it, except for obviously the government center. So how's this going to work?
So we have to go through an appraisal process. It's, and it's, it's, we had to go through this down on Second Street with the businesses on both sides of forty-one. And it's much more difficult because we have to do more of an in-depth appraisal process for that. The, you know, like down on Second Street, there was, you know, some that had both residential units above commercial units. And so you had like the residential assessment for the upper part and the bottom part was based on a commercial appraisal. So the good thing is, is I think we set some good standards and precedent for what to do down on Second Street. So I think our appraisers that we work with sort of know, you know, how, how to deal with that. But it's really based on appraisal that we do. Any comments further on that, Matt?
No, it, it's a good way of explaining it. I would say we've been a hundred percent consistent over the years in doing what's called the special benefit analysis. The benefit analysis is, is no different than what we would do for residential, commercial. It ultimately looks, looks at the properties, highest and best use. It looks at traffic, it looks at trip generations and it uses the appraisal methodology that says, what is the value of this particular, what is the value increase to the property before the project and after, after the project? It uses a market value analysis to justify that through the appraisal methodology. And again, it's been consistent since we started long before I was in this chair.
He was the boots on the ground guy at that time.
We're, we're just laughing, man, not at you.
I, I had to learn the hard way. So.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't even remember who the motion and the seconds were, so I hope somebody's got it. So who made the motion?
Motion was Hatfield, second was Wong.
Okay. No, I think, no, it was Hatfield. No, I know, I know it wasn't council member Hubbard, so. All right, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm going to go ahead and move to a vote to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, accept twenty twenty-one downtown reconstruction project feasibility with a public improvement hearing, May third, twenty twenty-one. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries, we are complete. Moves us to item nine, bills. Anyone?
Couple of questions. Page thirty-three, there's an item for the Department of Health. Just wondering why, this looks like the Water Supply Service, it looks like connections or connectivity or something. Shouldn't that, why is it Minister of Department of Health versus like my council or something?
So this is, so for every black church or water area or water network action church that we target for a building and a normal event, one of the things that were required by state statute are certain or limited to the Department of Health. Basically what it is, is it's their way of collecting the accident fee and administrative costs, or being monitored or assumed. So every city day, we're collecting exactly the same amount for water action in the city. And then I can hear on a monthly basis or on a quarterly basis, we basically definitely get those regular fees.
That's where that comes from. And then each forty-three, there's an item for Valley Rich Company Incorporated. It's for Pioneer Trail Water Main.
Yes, that's a Super Bowl water main break.
Oh.
The most representative water main break.
Yes, it was a Super Bowl water main break. So they, they ended up getting it closed up so it didn't impact traffic that weekend and then Monday morning, early, they came in and did their repair on that.
Valley, Valley Rich is a Chaska company that, that we use on, because some of our mains are pretty deep. I, I, if I'm not mistaken, that's kind of
Yep.
how and why we use some of those private contractors because we don't have the big holes like that to get to that level. But Valley Rich is located out in the Chaska Industrial Park, so.
And there's some areas that we'll do it just because they're highly sensitive areas and need to be done quick. And that's one of them. You don't want to have a commercial area closed down for too long. And so by bringing in a crew like that, we're able to get it done pretty quick so it doesn't impact their business. A lot of times on, on residential ones, we'll be able to do that. We have the equipment to do it, but it doesn't, it doesn't impact people as much if it's, you know, if we're there during the day when they're at work.
Wasn't there a snow event that day as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it was a Sunday and.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was, we were worried it was going to be like the other Pioneer water main break on the other side, but thank God it was not.
On the bills. Entertained a motion to pay the bills.
Real quick, when the mayor had a question on a bill that you had called me about on the Cuskey for the two thousand nineteen project. That's the remaining retainage for the project. So we have to go through and make sure that the wear course is down and we've done all testing. We have accepted all the improvements before we pay out the retainage. So that's the remaining retainage that was there for that project.
And, and I, I figured it just seemed high to me that.
It's five percent of the project cost.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks. To entertain a motion to pay the bills. Motion by Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Gra to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Do I need to call, do I need to call roll for bills?
Oh, thanks.
Take my one job, man.
He's here for one reason, take it away.
It's like wait all night for this moment.
Never mind that vote. Nate, would you call roll, please?
Yes, I would love to. Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard. Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes, good job. Thanks for calling that out. And just every time I do something, I either, I gotta unmute, turn up the volume or remember to do something. I'm ready to go back home. It's a lot easier. It's a lot simpler. All right, moves us to other business. I'm going to start with Councilmember Gra, come across the table, so.
All right, I'm unmuted. Let's see, I kind of list here. I'm just going to comment the stuff, the bus event on March my first because gosh, it's, it's a long time ago, but we haven't met since then. I just was, I was, I was able to help sort and kind of get the stuff on the table and just amazed at the, again, just the community outpouring of donations and kind of the community coming together. You know, we talked, we started this meeting with a conversation about what we don't want in our community and what we don't. And then, you know, you, you kind of end with this conversation here, a little bit of the good things that this community does provide and support its people and everything. So that was just a fun event to kind of see the, all the food come in and. So that was just a fun event to kind of see uh the, all the food come in and interesting grocery, you know, colors of shampoo and soap and, you know. Uh, the mayor and I had a conversation about uh grape jelly versus strawberry jelly and clearly more grape jelly was purchased. But I'm, I'm partial to strawberry. That's my partial.
Grape jelly, one hands down.
So just talking about that.
Peanut butter and grape jelly, not strawberry. Strawberry ain't a pit.
So we'll agree to disagree on that one, but we're all right. Um, just a commentary about uh, on the, I serve as a representation of the Eastern County Community Education Recreation Advisory Board, which is very much a multiple. A couple of things of note, uh, Jackie Johnson, who's the director, has announced her retirement. Um, so that'll be effective, I think, end of July or July one, I believe, and they're hoping to make hires. So she'll, you know, I've, I've only known her on that group and she's just full of energy and runs a good organization, so she'll be missed. But um, they're moving north. They're gonna be cabin people and up north and kind of have that process, so excited for her. Uh, it's interesting, because I, I think there's some, you know, you look for signs of recovery, signs of economic recovery, signs of pandemic recovery. Uh, and so, you know, uh, one of the biggest indicators I think we've learned through the pandemic is the importance of childcare. And so they talked about club care in the summer. Their, you know, their childcare numbers are really looking to be close to pre-twenty, pre-pandemic numbers. So take last year out, the, the year before, which to me is just an interesting signal that more people are getting back in the office, less working from home to some degree and anticipating that. So they're lining up where their kids have to go. Um, so I, I think that's an interesting sign of, of some of the, of pre, of pandemic recovery. So that was kind of exciting to see. Um, I gotta pull up this website here. I was gonna talk about the uh Shade Tree Program. I always think, I, it always sneaks up on me. Uh, I've planted a lot of trees in my, in my neighborhood area. So just I mentioned that March twenty-sixth through the April ninth is the Shade Tree Program order. Uh, they get wholesale prices through the city and get delivery uh for three dollar charge from the Chaska Works. Uh, good categories, good sized trees. And so now when, you know, it's been seventy and eighty today and you're thinking about getting your yard in shape, just to kind of remember the, about the Shade Tree Program. I think it's a great program the city of Chaska uh puts on. Um, uh, speaking of just great things the Chaska does, again, I was informed actually by a resident in the, in my, in my direct neighborhood that they were notified through the city electric department about some concerns with their electric. And actually was brought to my attention that I went to thought, but with new construction houses. The, at times when the house settles, the main electrical line that can come in the house can get tension, have some tension and actually can cause an arc. Uh, and so it was kind of just a good reminder for all residents in our neighborhood to kind of look at that, where that line's coming in and, and look for that. And actually, they discovered that it actually, you know, kind of like burnt out a section in their piece. And you have to come in and get that fixed, because uh, you know, they put that line in there and then things shake and settle. So uh, if that, if that's you, if you recently built a house or have some new construction or major remodel, something to look at, which I thought was just kind of a, I would have never thought of that to occur. Um, let's see, uh, two last things. Let's talk about COVID. I, I feel like I've, we've done that for a long time. Um, you know, I was talking a little bit with um, you know, Matt when he had walked in. And I think it serves as a good reminder that, you know, there's definitely some good trends of vaccination. Right? I think there's four million vaccines administered today in the U.S., which was a record, roughly, I think it was four million, um, which is a great number. The thing that's most concerning, and I think we just got, and I, it's a great reminder for me with young children, is some of the, the continued evidence that the variant that is very present in Minnesota that has impacted Carver County particularly, and really now Carver County's numbers are starting to, to take off a little bit. Seems to be impacting children more often and younger children, you know. So one of the saving graces, in my personal opinion, is that throughout this pandemic, the youngest children, the most vulnerable children have tended to, to not get really sick or, and, and, and it hasn't been an impact. And you are starting to see that now. And so, um, you know, I just remind parents to be mindful of symptoms and, you know, if that's a cough or if it's allergies, it doesn't help that it's allergy season now too. Uh, but like I said, I, I think the goal for me and my family right now is I'm hoping that we can get two more months of school without a quarantine. Uh, I shared individuals of my class, uh, my son's kids, twenty-seven kids in the class two weeks ago, all but nine were quarantined due to exposure. So it is still very present in the schools, and I think that is what's most concerning right now. Yeah, the vaccine numbers are going up, but the individuals right now that seem to be eating it tend to be the ones that the vaccine is not quite, you know, not available yet. So just a reminder, wear your mask, keep social distance, and then, you know, but celebrate your, your key victories too, you know. Um, I'll personally share just a kind of a key victory for me personally is that with seventy degrees weather uh and be able to be outside, I was actually able to see my mom and my mother-in-law and father-in-law for first time since August. They're just in western Minnesota. They're not that far away, but they're not, they haven't been in our bubble, right? So, you know, it was, it was tough and it was hard decisions to make, to miss things and miss stuff. Uh, but there are moments of, of, of joy and celebration too as we come out of this pandemic. So it's just kind of a good reminder. Clearly know that there are people who've probably gone longer without seeing close relatives. I'm not, you know, minimizing that by any means, but I do, I do think at times we gotta take joy and celebration for moments that, you know, we, we, we've just lost over this last year. Uh, and then my last item here, just a, a shout out and a good luck to the Chaska High School Girls Basketball. Uh, they play Hopkins on Thursday for the state quarterfinal. Uh, that was the anticipated matchup about four weeks ago, and then COVID hit the high school and shut that match, that game down. That would have been interesting, because that would have been really one versus three at that time. Uh, and now you're gonna have it uh due to some interesting seedings in the, in the state tournament. You actually get that, that matchup here in the quarterfinals. So just good, good luck to the Chaska Girls Basketball uh program and, and as they play Thursday. And that is all I have.
All right, I'll have a couple of things here. Um, there's a food distribution event um is on April fifteenth at the old Getney Factory. They're still looking for volunteers. Um, and of course, you know, this is one of those great community events that, you know, for, you know, helping those who um are, and, you know, are having challenges um with food security. So um, that's something that's still an ongoing issue here in our state and our own community here. So it's a great event to help out and provide food for those who need. Um, then I have one question. Um, one of the items that we've seen quite a bit on the news recently, um, and heard about both locally and throughout the state has been um about catalytic converter thefts. And, you know, and we actually know um acquaintances who actually have had, you know, catalytic converters stolen out from like their own vehicles parked in front of their homes sort of thing. And, you know, I've saw that there is an article um talking about Saint Paul Police offering um like some sort of like uh marking or tagging or something like that of those catalytic converters with, you know, the hopes that that would make it discourage someone from stealing it. Because um certainly the, you know, for those who aren't aware, like catalytic converter thieves basically will go under your car, cut out the catalytic converter. It takes out like, you know, three to five minutes with a, with a, you know, the uh electric saw. And then just take that and salt to a scrapyard for the precious metals that contains. And they can get anywhere from like, you know, maybe like fifty to like, you know, like maybe three, three hundred bucks for that catalytic converter that's stolen. But a lot of those junkyards or those processing centers won't take it if they know that's marked, because, you know, they know that it came from a vehicle that was, you know, that was stolen from a vehicle. You know, is there something that we can do in the community like that or something else to help discourage that? Because we know what's already hitting us in our own community here.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things that, that we did, boy, it must've been a week and a half ago, because it was before I left. Uh, we actually put out sort of a public service uh announcement on that and actually uh, you know, recommended that. Um, you know, people keep cars in their garage, they keep the gar, garage door closed. But we actually made the recommendation that people just mark uh their catalytic converters on their car. I mean, it's, it's nothing fancy. It's just, it's just, you know, permanent marker or something like that to be able to, to mark, to identify that it's your uh, because it is an issue right now. Um, but, you know, I can tell you in, in our household, we, we went from having cars out in the driveway to cars in our garage with the door, garage door closed. We also have uh, you know, uh, our officers, one of the programs that, that they do is, you know, if they're driving around at night and they see a garage door that's open, uh, they'll go uh and work to proactively get it closed or, or leave a note to remind people to close it. Um, because, you know, one of, this is an opportunity or a crime of opportunity. They're only gonna do it if it's easy. Uh, and so I guess the message we're sending to them is don't make it easy and it probably won't happen. And it's not hard to just go and just mark your catalytic converter, which is something to identify that it's yours.
Yeah, and, you know, so I, I think that for some people, it's like the advice for putting a car in the garage is generally good advice, but for a lot of people, it's not an option.
Yeah, no doubt. There's no doubt about it.
Yep, and so, yeah.
But it's not a bad idea to mark it, uh, but it doesn't need to be anything particularly special, just something that identifies it, that can be clear that it was, that it's your. You know, that's not the person who is cutting it out and trying to sell it then.
I guess like, I'm just wondering, is there, is there something that, you know, we can offer that would, you know, when, you know, like could help out? Because I'm sure that some people were like, oh, you know, what does that mean? You know, what, what is my catalytic converter? Don't even know where to start kind of thing, but they've heard about it. They have already had a friend had it stolen or something. I mean, I can call in my own car and do it, but I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge is gonna be is we, we probably wouldn't be able to get to a point of being able to send somebody else to actually mark it, uh, because we just don't have the staff for that. But we could talk about what other cities are, are doing to, you know, to maybe sort of help with, with that. Um.
But could we part, maybe pair it up with like the, was it the, gosh, was it the car seat safety thing? Because, you know, people come to bring their cars to, you know, check out the car seat safety and like pair it up with something like that where they already, they're there already.
Well, certainly people who come to the police station, I mean, that's the type of things that we can do.
Yep.
Is to be able to show people, but it, we can have a discussion about it in staff meeting tomorrow and, and, you know, talk about, is there a way that we could?
There, there is a program, they send the ticket to your mechanic and every mechanics market. Because the thing is, catalytic converters get very, very hot.
Yeah.
So you really can't drive it to the police station, because they can't touch it. So it's really something that has to be done when the car sat for a while.
Yeah.
But, but the, they're saying is, is most mechanic shops are, are doing that for people now, but you gotta tell them.
Yep.
So that, that's the best option is wherever you get your car service, take it there and.
Sure.
Ask them if they can mark your catalytic converter, but they, they're just, I mean, they get so hot, they're knowing like um PGA events where you're parking on the high grass.
Yeah.
They can start grass fires, so.
Yep.
Pretty hard to drive it somewhere and ask someone to do it right on the spot, because it's too hot.
So that's what Saint Paul is doing, is they're having um clinics, so like we have animal vaccination clinics. They're having auto clinics where, you know, you partner whatever, but that's what Saint Paul is doing, is having actual clinics. You drive through, they spray paint it orange, you drive off.
Yep.
We could check into it and, and see what others are, are doing. Um, and then get back to you.
Cool. Great, thank you.
You done?
Yep, that's all I got.
No, if I was last. I, I just have one question as I was. As I was helping the Easter Bunny out on Friday, drop eggs in some of the local parks, uh, I just have a question for you, Matt. Um, Canyon Park, Canyon Road Park or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
When's that slated to be playground equipment slated to be replaced? I know I'm putting you on the spot, and if you don't know.
Um, so is that, are you talking about the one in East Creek Canyon?
It's one over like the neighborhood across from the southwest bus um station on forty-one. And if you don't know today.
Yeah, I, the only reason I hesitated is I actually thought that that one was.
I thought it was.
I, I think that one was completed.
I thought it wasn't all along though, that's what I was thinking.
Because I think it was the first one that we put irrigation into.
It sits kind of along the highway, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, you sort of come across from southwest transit and then come up into the neighborhood a little bit and it's on your left.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I'm almost positive that that's the one that.
Either that or it's uh Hazel Team Bluffs. What about that one?
Uh, Hazel Team Bluffs just got replaced two years ago.
Nope, then that wouldn't be it. Uh, the only reason why I ask is there was a lot of rust. There's like a, the like, one of the steps in the playground, it's like so rusted that it's like splitting and it's exposed and, and I just didn't know.
Are you thinking it, it's not Cortina Woods?
Uh-uh, not Cortina.
Huh. I, I can check on, on East Creek, but like you said, I'm.
It just looked pretty rough, so just was curious when it's slated.
Unless it was one that we moved with, that was Cortina Woods.
Yeah, I.
I'm nearly, I'm.
I'll ask on that one.
No, it wouldn't be Hazel Team Bluffs, because that was the second one. It was the last park, it was on Canyon Road or.
Yeah, there's only one in here.
Yeah, and that's the one. So anyways, it's just a point of uh.
Yep.
Curiosity, just because it, it looked unsafe almost for little kids. So anyways, that's uh, that was just it. Otherwise, I don't have anything.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, I, it's Miss H. Just kidding. Um. It's really hard for me to find a husband if you think that I'm already married. Just kidding. Um, the only thing really is just that um, I got a nice little card from Carver County Public Health in the mail um about being able to go to their website. It was in English and Spanish, so I thought that was great to get more information about the vaccine and where they can get the vaccine. Um, and that led me to discover that it is National Minority Health Month um in April. And that is just to raise awareness about the health disparities um in and amongst the, the different, how the health disparities affect the um people in racial and ethnic minority groups. So obviously, the pandemic has been extremely hard on some of those groups. Um, so this National Minority Health Month, um, really pushing how to be vaccine ready and where they can give vax, the vaccine to kind of help uh offset some of those disparities that we see. So I just wanted to highlight that information. You can read more about it on the um Carver County Public Health's website. That's all.
Um, I put in my bi-weekly that there's gonna be a joint school board and then council from each of the four cities meeting. Uh, the superintendent did get back with a date for that, and it's gonna be planned for Wednesday, April fourteenth, which is uh. It's a week from this Wednesday, so it's next Wednesday, and it's going to be at seven P.M. And it'll be one that's just a Zoom meeting, so you can just be at your home and uh log into it. But the purpose of the meeting is really for the uh school board to be able to uh have uh staff go over some of the same information that the school board's been going over, looking at uh some of the information that they're uh looking at in making decisions about what direction to go. Uh, we had a chance, uh, all of the city managers uh had a chance to meet with the superintendent and Didi Carring about a week and a half ago uh to, you know, talk about saying that we think it'd be really good uh for the uh school board to come out and have this conversation with each of the councils before they get to a decision-making process for what to do uh with a potential referendum uh for next year. Uh, they have a lot of good information to share, and one of the concerns we had is that maybe not everybody's getting all the information. Uh, and that this might be another avenue for us, the cities, to help get out that information and help people understand what are the, what are the things that they're looking at from an information perspective that's sort of driving the decisions that they might have to uh, to make over the next uh few months. Uh, we wanted to try to do this in April, uh, because they're shooting for the end of June uh to make a decision on what they would do for next year. So it really gives us a couple of months uh here then, if there's big issues that any of the councils see as far as concerns or things that think need to be looked at, to be able to give some of that feedback um and, and have some time to be able to, to go and, and look into that more. So uh, again, April fourteenth, it's a Zoom meeting. Um, I'll be getting over to you the Zoom link uh so that you uh will have it. And like I said, you can just do it uh from your home. Uh, we're gonna make sure that we post it uh so that uh everybody knows it's, it's a public meeting. So anybody can join in if they want to. Seven P.M.
Is it gonna be recorded at all?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, the, the hope is, is that we'd like to have it as sort of a meeting that um, you know, gives you guys an opportunity to ask questions, but also something recorded so that we can put it back out on each. so that we can put it back out on each of our cities', uh, websites, so that people have an opportunity to be able to, to look at it and have another, uh, method of getting that information. Yeah, and one of the things that we've committed to, uh, as the city manager group and the superintendent is we're gonna have regular meetings, uh, like that. Uh, so as these issues pop up, if there's things that we think, uh, we really need to sort of get the community involved in or the council involved in or things like that, uh, on real important topics, that we're catching those early, uh, that we're, we're understanding what those things are months down the road, uh, so that they don't come up as a surprise, uh, later on. So I, I think it's the basis for really good, uh, discussion. I think it's a great place to start. I think we have time, uh, now. Uh, and, uh, one of the things we had looked at having, so we have our Eastern Carver County, uh, elected leaders meeting group that meets every few Fridays. We had looked at having that meeting at first, I think it was actually that week. Um, we're actually gonna move that till a couple of weeks later, uh, than that, so that if there is feedback that's coming from councils, uh, that that's something that you can provide, uh, myself and Mark are, are the ones to attend on behalf of the city for that, that you guys can provide that feedback to us and that we can provide that into that meeting so that they get good feedback. Cause, you know, sometimes it's hard on the spot to be able to come up with a question or, or you, you look at that, something you have to sort of think about it for a while. Um, so that'll give us an opportunity to listen and if we come up with things afterwards, to be able to still have a, a formal mechanism to get that feedback into the process.
Um, I, I just got a email from Jackie today. We're meeting Friday, the 16th to discuss exactly this. We're gonna have the whole session.
I'll find out for sure on that.
Yeah, so as a reminder, community leaders meeting Friday, the 16th at 7:30 and we're gonna, different structure. We're gonna utilize the next meeting to facilitate discussions on the district following April 14th work session. So maybe two days instead of two weeks.
Uh, I'll find out. She, she wasn't a part of that meeting, so I, I don't know if it, so, okay.
So, all right, thanks.
Yep, that's all I have.
Eight? Nothing? Luke? Mike? Kevin, thanks for coming in. Sorry about that. I know, you're... You're the man. You have nothing?
I don't.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, before you jump in, I do actually have one more thing that I was gonna ask.
Take your mask off, will you?
Yep, no problem. Um, I was just curious on, and this is a question from Matt. Uh, the median that's immediately right out here that clearly got hit by a vehicle of some sort, it's been broken and kind of like, like it just got hit in the last several weeks now. Shock me if it's already fixed and I just didn't notice it coming in today. But I'm just curious on, if at least we can get it cleaned up because I think the junk's still just laying there and it looks like it was freshly hit. Yeah, it's like right on the corner. I drive by it, like I said, every day and it looks like every day it just got hit. I mean, we at least could like pick the chunk of cement that's...
Yeah, I'll find out. I, I think it's the county that does the maintenance on that. If it is, we'll get the, we'll get that information over to them. Um, but, uh, I'll, I'll make sure.
Yeah, like I said, I, I understand it takes a while to actually get it fixed, but like the debris probably can be picked up just to look a little cleaner. Cause it literally looks, if you go like right now, assuming it's not fixed, it looks like it just got hit tonight because the chunk's still kind of into it, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Nope, no problem, no problem. Uh, I just have a couple of things. One thing I, I want to give a, a shout out to our electric utility company. Uh, we were recognized for reliable electric service in 2020. Um, the City of Chaska's utilities reliability is 99.983% reliable. And I don't know that you can't get it any better than that. So I think people...
(audio cuts out)
Well, I gotta believe that by far.
(audio cuts out) is because of the fact that we have four substations in town, so we have a lot of redundancy and we also have our staff that's over there for us. And it makes such a huge difference. And, you know, excellent to have people with the bodies that have to respond to, uh, farming wherever. And so if, you know, just the fact that we have people that are so close and we have so much redundancy system and, you know, one of the things that we talked about, uh, during, uh, in eight nights approved the underdog program, all those types of things make such a huge difference on the electric system approach. Huge for those guys.
Yeah, I, I think that that's when you, when you can have that kind of reliability. I mean, that's not a hundred percent, but boy, it's awful doggone close, so.
Just to put it in perspective, that's like 89 minutes a year. You know, 89 minutes a year and, you know, like when I'm in IT, so we look at those things have a number for like, you know, whether or not they're like Amazon's up or whatever. And that's how super high, that's a really high number, even a lot of companies on the IT side strive to hit that type of number, so, you know, so that's, that's not, we can talk about heavy power, that's a big deal to deal with those numbers.
So, yep, that's pretty good. So kudos to our electric crews and, and it's like top all the way down to the, to the last guy that, that takes to make that operate like that. So thanks to everyone for, for their efforts. Um, last thing I just want to end on, probably not the most positive note, but, uh, we had a somewhat of a tragic event happened at the town course this weekend. We had a young man that, uh, uh, passed away on our eighth tee box. Um, but more importantly, he was, uh, John Swanson, a young man yet, uh, but he is the son of Tracy and Denny Swanson. Uh, Tracy was our former mayor. Denny was a long time banker in the community. Um, just a very, very sad event to happen and so close to Easter. So I just want to offer my condolences to the Swanson family. Um, John was an avid, avid golfer. I guess if there's a way for a guy that was a golfer like him, if that was the way to go on the eighth tee box, I guess that's the only thing that you can smile a little bit and, and, and think, wow, he went the way, he was a golf pro. His, uh, wife is real big into golf. Uh, she's a part, teaching pro. Um, so that golf is, golfing's their life, but, uh, the Swanson and a bunch of their friends every three weeks come to the town course. He doesn't live in town right now, uh, but they come to the town course and there's like, they get three or four foursomes and they, they play golf every week there. So they were all well, you know, John's well-known amongst the, uh, communities, uh, part of town course. So, uh, just a sad, sad day when I heard that, that, uh, um, so it, and it ended up to be, uh, they thought at first it was a heart attack, but it was a, actually it sounded like it was a brain aneurysm. So it was just one of those that unfortunately there was nothing that, um, could be done, um, for, for the young man. So again, my condolences to, um, and I want to offer the city's condolences to the Swanson family, um, in this very, very tragic time for them, so. Oh, I don't know how to go after that, but with that, um, I don't have anything else. Um, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn and we do have a, um, EDA meeting immediately following this and we are back on to April, you may know, 19th is our next council meeting, so we're back to normal schedule, first and third now. We should be pretty good barring a holiday here and there, so, um, we should be back on track to our, uh, normal meeting. So with that, again, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by council member Wong.
Second.
Second by council member Hubbard. I heard Hubbard first. Uh, didn't say it wrong. Um, adjourned, um, with that, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. All right, we adjourned. I don't have a gavel. 9:23, we adjourned. And now, Mike, we can roll right in, right? All right, so we will, uh, at, uh, 9:23, we'll call the Chaska Economic Development Authority meeting together, uh, Monday, April 5th, 2021. Um, Nate, we call roll.
Commissioner Hatfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Gra.
Here.
And President Winchell.
Here. Uh, with that, uh, right, uh, if there are no discussion, I look for adoption of the agenda or there is no additions or corrections, I would, uh, move to adopt the agenda. Those are the motion. Motion by Commissioner Wong.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next we have to approve the previous meeting minutes from March 15th. EDA meeting, again, if there are no corrections or additions, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Com- Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gra. Uh, discussion. Hearing none, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us on to item five, which is Resolution EDA 2021-1, recommend that a city council adopt a modification to the development program for redevelopment project area four and establish tax increment financing economic development district number 24.
Uh, present commission members.
Adopt a tax increment financing plan. What?
I thought you were done.
Oh, it's so long.
All right.
I can't, I felt I was done too, but there was more to read.
Uh, present commission members, this item is basically the EDA, uh, is the same item that we saw in the council meeting, uh, but basically with these, uh, TIF districts and with these agreements, basically it's the city council authorizes our EDA, uh, to, to establish a TIF district and to authorize entering into the agreement. So it's basically the exact same item, but authorizing the EDA to do it. We can certainly go into, uh, all the detail that Nate went into before if you want us to. Uh, otherwise, uh, we are recommending approval of both, uh, the TIF district and then also the business subsidy agreement.
So questions? I want to make sure you have an opportunity if we do need to have any, but like I say, it's exactly the same thing. We just have to prove it as the EDA. So, um, but I don't want to just skim over it either, so if you, there's a question, feel free to ask it now. Um, Nate, what size are the buildings?
Oh, never mind.
We don't ask him because he won't remember.
Yeah. 133 and a... 146? Was it 168?
I think it's 100, I think it's 168.
Yeah, that's...
Just the right side is what I...
I was just, I was just checking. I knew what it was. I knew it was 168. I was just checking to see.
Yeah, that's what I was doing earlier.
All right, uh, if there, if there are no questions, uh, I'd entertain a motion and I'm, all I'm gonna say is Resolution EDA 2021-1.
Come on. So moved. Uh, second to...
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Gra, second by Commissioner Hubbard to, uh, adopt EDA 2021-1 and basically it's making, uh, making that area a part of project area four and establishing TIF District 24. That's in a nutshell. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Right, other business, anyone regarding EDA stuff? Anything? Anything? Last call, motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Wong.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard to, uh, adjourn. All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. We adjourned. Have a good night. We'll see you in two weeks. Thanks for dealing with our audio issues.